Okay, I'll keep the others back for another time. Brian?
To Mayor Larson, City Council. This letter is in regards to Charles Peterson and as I wish to be remembered in name on council chambers doors. I am in favor of this endeavor and believe that it would be a great way to honor Charles and his contribution to the city of Snohomie. He was a true and trusted politician for so many years. I believe this is the least we can do for him and his family. Thank you for your consideration. Kristi Goffin, 8054 Main Drive, Southeast Snohomie, 98065. Do you want a copy of it there?
Sure, or turn them all out at the same time. Counsel, only because I'm sensing you want to make a decision tonight, but I allow the letters in other ways, I would say just submit them for the record. And you could read those if you're pleased between now and another councilman. But given that you're just being making a decision tonight, I assume you want to hear the question when you give the letters tomorrow?
We have...
How many letters do we have?
Pass me the... We have, what we have is cards. There was a comment made by a couple of councilpeople that they did not, they thought it was a unique situation in putting a name on council chambers and that council chambers don't have names on them.
Carol, I'm just asking how many letters do we have?
Okay, sixteen cards.
See, I probably would have cut the time down to one minute.
Exactly. There are sixteen cards of examples of names that are put on council chambers. Two recently in the state of Washington, five in Edward. Sixteen.
All right. Could you submit those, that we could just look at them or pass them down?
Well, they're throughout the audience, but yes.
Oh, I see. So if people are really tested by that, that's fine. All right. Is there someone else who'd like to speak at this time? Wendy?
You don't need my name on it.
We know where you work.
Yeah. That's right. So, you know, recently, I was in a public forum where there was a statement made that there was a lack of vision for the city of Snohomie. And you may not agree with their vision, but all of you, all they have to do is look around to see that there have been numerous people over many years with plenty of vision. Charles, of course, was one of these people in spades. I feel fortunate to have gotten to know Charles and Carol and echo what has been said thus far about the commitment that they both have made to the city. Over the years, I've experienced his deadpan and down-to-earth humor and heard about some of his contributions and service. At his memorial, it was evident to many attendees that there was so much more of the course of his life. However, memorialization is complicated, especially given these council chambers are one of, if not the foremost, places of civic service and engagement. They have been and will ongoingly be the setting for the continuum of those who care about Snohomie's past, present, and future. Not to diminish Charles' vision and contributions, but I'm conflicted about memorializing the council door with one individual's name. Could these chambers and the city hall be, remain unnamed and representative of all the people who will be a part of the civic processes that unfold in these chambers? There should be a memorialization that is worthy of Charles' significant legacy. I would suggest perhaps that the citizen candidacy might be one that would be worthy of his legacy. That's just something that impresses me, that it is about the future of government and things that he stood for. So that's all I have to say. And I know that's not going to mesh with everybody else's or a lot of other people's perspectives, but as you know, I am not always everybody's perspective.
Thank you.
I'm nervous January. I live at 46724 Southeast North Side Road, outside the city limits of North Bend. That was not my original address when I moved here. Ridge in 1966. We had no neighbors. All the way to Falls City, no neighbors. All the west, all the way west to Preston, no neighbors until you come over the other side of I-98 to Echo Lake. But we found neighbors here named Charles and Carol Peterson. Wonderful people. Over the years, I wondered, what is it that set Chuck Peterson apart? And I think it's because he was an electrician at the mill. He dealt with powerful porzos that had to be hooked up right the first time. He was a man about and knew about connections. And that's what takes place here between the public and the government in this room. I think it would be in keeping with his spirit and his motivation and his methodology for people to reflect on his leadership as a member of the government of this community. I can think of no better, more fitting way to do it. I have this council chamber named for Charles Peterson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Maria, I'll come to you next.
My name's Michael Kelly. I live at 529 Northeast 8 in North Bend. I have a speech here, but I just want to speak to the council as they shouldn't vote in favor of this resolution, 1405. I can't follow the analogy of a pro-football player with millions of dollars playing a short time in the sport compared to Charlie Peterson, who didn't make a whole pack of long money being a mayor or a municipal person, won't be. In forty years, forty years of public service, I don't feel I find anyone else that's put up that much time. Forty years of public service. I think that you should all be honored to honor him with this resolution and vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
It's so good to be on this side. I feel like...
You can yell at it, see?
I know where to find you. And I said, "I'm Maria Hemerson. Hello." I left council a few years ago. I sat, I sat here with Charles Peterson to my left-hand side for the better part of that ten years. And I, when I left, I decided to do it cleanly. I decided I would leave you all, my trusted colleagues, with the decisions that had to be made, so you haven't seen me here in this living room until tonight. For Charles Peterson and for this building, for this room, for this city, I will stand here and ask for your consideration. Charles served and supported the city government and the Valley organizations and individuals of this community, like we've heard this evening, wherever and whenever he was needed, from institutions, schools, hospital, metal brick farm, gosh, water to form, the church, I can't even list them all. And the accomplishments in city government are just too numerous. You all know what they are. He was devoted to bringing this valley and the community together. And Charles' legacy lives on in the Valley institutions and in this government that he served so well. But it kind of, Charles reminds me of this room, actually. This room was built to do the same thing. It's not just a council chamber. When we built this building, we created this room to be a community room, not just a council chamber. It was, in its capacity as that, you know, it serves the school board, it serves the hospital board, and coming up here, it serves Daughters of the American Revolution, Special Olympics, encompassed Cascade Football, Washington State Patrol, Eagle Scouts. And this is a place of character. This building, this room, this city, we're not a suburb. We enjoy having our character here. We enjoy the character that was Charles.
Maria, I'm sorry. If you can quit the conversation.
Sure. I'd be happy to. And part of the character is, are these paintings behind you? But I think that with the devotion of his life to this valley, to this city, with the fact that we have worked to create and save character in this town, or create and save history in this town, I think by having Charles' name over the door, people will ask the question, "Who was Charles Peterson?" And in the answer to that question, they're going to hear fifty years worth of history of this city. And there is no other person for whom that can be said, and I don't expect there will be another person for whom that can be said. So I would encourage you that it's a very appropriate honor for Charles and it's an appropriate honor for this building to have his name over the door.
Thank you, Maria. Anybody else? Yeah?
Hi, my name's Abigail Grimsdow. I live at 38055 Southeast 83 in Snohomie. Well, first off, I want to give an example of a chamber being named after a longtime councilman in Cherry Hill, New Jersey in 2012. A crowd of more than fifty community members, friends, family, and area dignitaries came together on Wednesday, August 8th, to honor longtime councilman John Amato for his twenty-nine years of service to Cherry Hill. The township's council chambers were officially renamed the John Amato Council Chambers, following a unanimous approval by the council. He had served eight consecutive terms since 1983, making him the longest-serving and eldest councilmember in the history of Cherry Hill. I also realize, looking around, that I'm probably the youngest one here. So I wanted to speak to you from my generation standpoint, which I think a lot of us have a tendency to become detached from our history. And I feel really lucky in the sense that I know a lot of people that know a lot about history. And luckily enough, they've been, they've cared with me. And I think that re, not renaming, but honoring Charles Peterson with the naming of his council chambers would be a really great way to, it just makes us attached to our history more. And I think especially for my generation, you need that. I think he was lovely. I don't remember not knowing him. And with the amount of service that he gave this community and essentially everyone he met, he was just a very giving soul. I think that is an appropriate way to honor him. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Tell your mom I said hi. Anybody else, please?
Can I greet?
Oh, she's in there. Carol? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Norma Jenner. I live on the Mount Cyrode in North Bend. I think it's a wonderful opportunity we have to put Charles' name over this room. It's for us, like everything else he did. He gave us an example of service through his whole life. And it wasn't for his own benefit. It wasn't for his own glory. He was always humble, always giving to other people, always listening to what they needed, how they thought about things, and he considered everybody's thoughts equally. And for us to be reminded of that kind of a thought process as we go through these doors is a real blessing. Let's not wait. Be really grateful to have known such a man.
Thank you. Anybody else? Maria?
All right, Peterson, my address is on local, so I don't have to mention a weight in my words at all.
I think, I think it's on the... The same son, though.
My father, Charles Peterson. Not a whole lot to add, given what everybody else has said is wonderful here. My job as a civil engineer, I do a lot of work at council boards. And there's generally two types of people I've gotten to know, neither conversely. There's those that show up and vote and go home, and there's those who go home and read and study and research and communicate. My father is definitely the latter. Every time I come home to visit, he's at the kitchen table with a stack of papers, that thick of what's on your agenda, researching it, trying to understand what's the best approach, what needs to be done. And he'd give me a stack and say, "Here, I need you to read page 26." Okay? I'm doing something. Nope, we need to stop and read this. You need to know what's going on. He was deeply involved in what was going on. It wasn't just something to show up for. There were comments made earlier that naming buildings, I believe it was during earlier times, named federal buildings or legislative buildings, that people got done. Quick research, it's shown that it is done, it's been common. I got on the computer the other day, putting one search term and then Google Explorer. Just in the last year, city that I would say if my folks named council chambers, you know, is happening to individuals who have provided a good effort of research. All across county, this is a way to look at that thing, but there are people who, I guess, never looked for recognition, but I think against this search, yes, I think there is.
Thank you, Maria. Anybody else? Tracy?
I don't have a prepared, you need my address. It was here. Tracy, there's 7931 Maple Avenue, Southeast.
No, we're here, whatever.
I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to also acknowledge, I was a neighbor of Carol's in Chucks for 25 years. And we would go over and talk, and Chuck, the kitchen table always was full of papers. We could always go to Chuck and say, "What's going on?" And he would always, you know, calm us down. We were here before the ridge came and it was very nerve-wracking, you know, "What's going to happen?" You know, I think the population was a thousand when we moved here. And Chuck was always supportive. He was supportive of me for joining the library board. He was always looking at younger generations to try and get them involved with the projects and things. So I can't think of a better honor for that man than naming those chambers after him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Anybody else? Twenty-one. We'll call it back to the council for further deliberations and discussion. Okay.
Call a question?
Actually, I want to say a few comments, but all of them. May I say a few comments before you want? Okay. I think it, I think it was known by many of you that I was, that I was very, not in favor of this proposal. I didn't feel it fit. Again, I was sort of troublesome. This council right here, the only time that they have authority to effectively do anything is when they gather as seven members or a majority quorum in this room and deliberate about city business. When they go outside those doors, that authority leaves with them. And as individuals, they really don't have much authority to impact anything other than getting input from the community. So this is, this is, this door is this chamber, so I was a bit uncomfortable with the idea that a chamber would be named for an individual. So I appreciate the research, and some have done to show that it's been done in other areas. And I'll come back to that in a moment, I guess, because I want to throw the clarification. I guess I want some more discussion about precisely what's being done here. But what I wrestled with, too, was the issue of legacy. And it occurs to me, I think there's a saying, that kind of the question of whether history makes the man or man makes the history, and whether it's world, the events of a community that sort of throws someone into a place of making decisions where they make a significant mark, or whether it's the person that precipitates that. And what I wrestled with in terms of legacy issues, I look out in this crowd, and this is a very surreal sort of conversation going on, for somebody either rather new or, I gotta fault early enough, I know Fuzzy's grinning because a lot of you were strong political adversaries, and it's just fascinating to see folks gathered in this room that are speaking to this, this man that served with me for many years. But what I wrestled with is, again, looking out in this room, I see folks like former Mayor Fuzzy Fletcher. I was advocating, you know, for the name of the Genie and support Genie. I can think of no leader past or in the foreseeable future that will have as much of a transformative impact on this community for the things that Genie did with putting the Snohomie Ridge in motion and having phenomenal change to this community. I'm sure Fuzzy had a hand in, a large hand in Phase Two. That was a large part of his legacy. The Snohomie Preservation Initiative, the preservation of several, you know, hundred acres of land over by the falls, an icon for the community and for the state. The 205 River Wiping Project, Colleen Johnson, her signature's on the Snohomie Ridge One document. I could think of a half a dozen people in the community that would merit having a chair in it. Mayor, can you wrap up your comments? If you want us to go separate. We're going to have a talk later. So I've struggled with the fact that I know that I can think of a half a dozen people on hand that would merit having this chamber named in their honor, who have had a significant impact on this community. I have it at home that Dave Batty at Safeway Grand opened, you know, and I guess it was, and I put great weight into sort of Dave's opinion because he's been watching a lot of these folks through many decades in this town, was around during the days of, and again, I guess what troubled me, too, was that Charles was often on the wrong side of history. Because one of the only current people on both planning commission and council that voted against Snohomie Ridge, you voted against the mill site, you know, being an ancestor of the city. You know, so why wouldn't we be honoring the guy that seemed to end up on the, on the wrong side of some decisions in terms of where the city's history and future went? Thank you, that's the effect I wanted, actually. But then it dawned on me that that's precisely the point. And Sean, you did an extraordinary job at helping drive home the point of where I got to a place of comfort with this through the weekend, mulling this over, and I suspected there might be, I wasn't sure how the thing would tip. And that is that his legacy, I think, is less measured by the tangible things, the big impacts out there than the forty years he did on planning commission and council here inside the halls of these chambers. And sometimes the voice that doesn't get that external recognition the most is the one who often has the courage to be the advocate, or the devil's advocate, contrarian, the one, I thought that was extraordinary courage, Sean, you know, new councilman here. And this is, these are people in this room that have a history of this community that go back decades, and have the courage to sort of say, "I don't know if I'm just going to..." It would have been so easy just to sort of submit to that, say, "Yes." I think you did nothing but honor exactly what Charles represented in this community, that contrarian voice, the voice that was willing to, when, when, when all the popular opinion and voices is pushing one direction, to be willing to say, "Slow down, maybe there's a different way to look at it, let's think this through differently." And in that restart, I think he's had an undeniable, significant impact, you know, in almost everything that's gone in the city for some forty years. There was a brief hiatus there where he was not connected, but a profound impact that's brought me back to feeling that this is the appropriate place. And I guess maybe those had better instincts than I did, that it's involved of this room and deliberations that took place that most firmly embraces that. All along, I've been very comfortable with, whether it was the library next door, because he was part of taking the city into the, joining the King County library system, there was a number of ways I think you could honor him. But I just wanted to state, because I know some of you know I started out opposing this, Carol, I wanted you to know, I'd love to meet you in a Carolina head. Carol wanted to come in and meet, and I thought it would be, you know, maybe a comfortable meeting, but I think it goes to the spirit of what you're seeing in this room right here, that in a time where we have a very acrimonious politics that's, that kind of identifies party politics by tribe, what tribe you book up with, and identity politics. When you get down into a local community, have to live in a small community, to realize after a while that where the loyalties lie at the end of the day isn't that external identity politics. It's just knowing that people are committed to this community. And it's no mystery anymore that some of the people in this room who have been strong political adversaries running against each other racist before in the past are in this room speaking genuinely, authentically, warmly of this man or someone who they might have been a political opponent to at one point or on the opposite side of the issue. It just speaks to that, you know, the integrity of the individual. So I wanted to put on the record, Carol, I appreciate that, you know, you point-blank asked me, "Do you support this?" And then, you know, when we met a week or two ago, I said, "No." And, and I think we both reacted the same way. You said, you did get angry at me, you just said, "Well, that's fine, that's why we've always, Charles and I always respected you because you do what you used to do." And Charles did likewise. I always loved and respected Charles because I knew where he stood, he'd be around the bushes, and at least we knew how we could, where we stood with each other and could start to debate from an honest place where there's no hidden agendas. And that's where the best of politics, that's where the best of deliberations, the best of decisions come from, that place. You just can't have good government without that. And again, that meeting with you, I think, showed back home to me as well, in reflecting on that. So again, I just wanted to put on the record, following our conversation, let you know that I'm comfortable supporting this and, you know, I'm comfortable supporting the council, whatever they decide. Call a question? Question's been called. All those in favor of calling a question? Aye. Opposed, so with that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, most discurried. I'm sorry, counselor, what there was, one point I meant, I wanted to, I knew there was something I was forgetting to conclude before the vote, and perhaps it will lay at this point, but in my discussions with staff and some of the others, the other thing that got me comfortable with this, too, is that, again, it is the council chambers, and I do feel strong, and I understand that this is where the council gathers and does its business. It was conveyed to me, Carol, that you were comfortable with the fact that it would be, and I think, I'm looking at the, can we pull the exhibit up that showed a mock-up of what the naming might look like over the doorway there? Do we have that on the? Okay, can someone open that up real quick, Mark? The one that says council chambers dedicated? Is that it right there? Okay. So, and again, sorry, counselor, I meant to bring this up before you voted, in case you wanted to do some clarifying. Now, I'm the executive branch of government, so I have to execute what decisions made here tonight. What's making me a little nervous is to make sure we don't tarnish this honor tonight by having some disconnect in the coming weeks. I'm looking at the agenda bill that says Resolution 1405 authorizes Snohomie City Council to designate, renaming the Snohomie City Council Chambers as the Charles S. Peterson Council Chambers. It was explained to me that it's basically going to sort of remain as the Snohomie Council Chambers or Council Chambers, dedicated in honor of Charles Peterson, or dedicated to Charles S. Peterson. If there's other community groups that come in here and want to refer to it as the Peterson Room or Charles Peterson Room, that's fine, but if others refer to it, if it's on the schedule as the Council Chambers, Carol, it was explained to me that you understood that that, you know, might have some leeway there, and that was, okay, that, okay, the expectation is on counter, it's not always an installation of the Peterson Room. Is this, is this...
That is very acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Which one do you prefer? Left or right?
Great. Sorry to belabor a little more, I just want, I hope you appreciate that as the mayor who has to execute this, I didn't want to, one or two weeks from now, suddenly a very uncomfortable debate breaking out that, hey, it was supposed to be called the Charles S. Peterson Council Chambers versus what this mock-up was showing of Carol, and I assume everybody in the room's going to respect what Carol says. If Carol says, "Fine, everybody's fine with that," right?
To reinforce the point, may we have a vote in the sense of the council? Which one would be to move forward? I would make the motion that we move forward with the representation on the left. Could that motion include the placement of the lettering above the door?
And the color, too, and the font size?
And the color too, and the font size. I guess I'll make sure we're clear, it would be... Yes, it does. This mock-up does imply it's above the door, it would be very...
It does have the font, the size, four and a half, two inches.
Gentlemen, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I ask you to respect the form of the council, and we can have discussion, and we can move on. The motion is on the floor.
Okay, just say point of order. Chair, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
All right. Think point of order made appropriately, we'll pull it back. So motion, a second? Any further discussion on this? I'm not gonna address for more public comment on that. Carol has spoken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Carol, congratulations. And for all of us, frankly, it's an honor for all of us. Unanimous, which is what I was hoping for.
Thank you.
All right. And no one's gonna be offended if you guys all want to leave and actually enjoy the rest of the evening, huh? Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a quick five-minute break.
What you wanted was there.